If you want me to or don't want me to.
You know, we have some...
And I don't mind talking just a bit about, you know, we're in the final stages of our budget. We've lowered the millage rate by a quarter of a percent, quarter of one mil, which brings in less revenue. It's kind of funny, to look at my own home taxes. We dropped it a quarter of a mil and my taxes went up 22 cent, which is actually could have come down, which is a great thing because that tells you that property values are going up for the economy. The county has been in a tremendous amount of debt for a long time, all of it prior to any of the sitting board members. You know, we allocated about seven years ago an additional half a million dollars a year to pay on the debt, 550,000 of over half a million. And working with the new board, we're continuing to do that, but even putting more with that. And hopefully, if nothing bad happens, we should be able to reduce that debt down to zero. And that's what we look forward to in taking better care of the county employees. We did have problems keeping some of the employees in the county. They could go to most any place and get better benefits. I'll give Trey the credit. He took the bull by the horns in trying to give better medical insurance at an affordable rate to the family coverage. You know, you take paying, you know, $900, $1,000 a month for health insurance, it was, a lot of people just couldn't afford that. So we've actually went in there and voted and traced out a tremendous amount of research. They developed a board to look at it as a whole, insurance committee, and we have taken advantage of that. And we're now offering a family coverage to the employees that have the family coverage at a lot less expense to them, making it a better benefit for them to continue employment with the county. We've, I don't know, for the last 12, 13 years prior to any of us being in there, the county has spent two and a half million dollars a year hauling dirt, hauling dirt to dirt roads. And it washes out, it gets driven out. We all know where it's going. It's going to low spots, creeks and streams. It goes into the ditch, we dig it out. And that's a great, we've just been doing it again. And we all have been focused on doing something that's a more permanent fix. We've invested a tremendous amount of money into milled asphalt, which is not a, it's not a permanent fix, but it gets us a lot further than the dirt does. Putting the milled asphalt out, of course, now that stuff is dried up, but it is trinkling back down. I think we allocated $200,000 last year for milled asphalt and we were able to purchase $56,000 worth. But, and now it's starting to trickle back in again. And I'm thinking with all this construction going on, we're just, it just hasn't been available. But we have got a machine that can go in there and dig that up and we're adding a little mix with it and putting it right back down. And it's, it's doing a real good job so far. We're working on some additional things to keep it going, looking at trying to seal it. Is it more cost effective for us to seal it ourselves or contract that out? And we're just, we're exploring all of our options to do something better than hauling more dirt. David, I would, any questions? I mean, I'd be happy to go.
You just mentioned one, and that was a question that somebody had asked is, are there any, are there any Washington County services that might be better provided by private contractors or providers versus in the county?
I think with the, with the team of business owners that you have on the board, we're constantly looking at that. You know, our goal is not to replace employees, but if we're needing additional services, I mean, none of us are trying to take away jobs. If we're needing additional services, wipe the ceiling of this milled asphalt, that's something that hadn't been happening. Running this big machine that grinds up, that's something that's not been happening. You know, the more milled asphalt that we get on the roads, the less motor graders we're going to need. We're still going to need the dump trucks to haul the milled asphalt rather than hauling dirt. But we're just changing machines around. But to answer your question, yeah, with a group of business, business people that you have up there, four of us are business owners of ourselves and we, we're constantly looking at what's most cost effective for the county, for the taxpayers.
What's the single most compelling issue facing Washington County today? I know there's a lot, but what would you say would be the?
The worst case scenario?
Sure. Or what, what's the biggest thing that Washington County needs to do? Or infrastructure?
You know, we've got so much infrastructure that's been put in place and that continues to be moving forward. As most of y'all know, I mean, it was a big conglomeration of, with the city and the state has helped and the county by all means. And the school board has been involved with it, putting water and sewage on the south side of the interstate, on Highway 77. It's a great thing. And with our planning department, there are certain places where you can get, put businesses, it's got to be classified for business. I mean, it's got to be commercial property if you're going to put a commercial building there. And with the planning department, we've taken out a lot of the time consumption of the meetings and things of the property that's in place now to try to fast track that and make it commercial that the owners see fit to do that. But the infrastructure is, has been a great thing. On Highway 79, and we have some Holmes County people here, we've held hands with Holmes County Board of County Commissioners, the City of Bonifay, Washington County Commissioners. We've worked with them and have been awarded monies to run water and sewage from Bonifay, Holmes County, City of Bonifay, all the way through Holmes County into Washington County to be able to get water and sewage there, to be able to market some areas there in Washington County that has got a large traffic count. And we think that we can capture some of that to be able to market, market our town. And the more businesses that come, I think when the right one comes in, you're going to see a big influx of homes being built, people moving here, which is going to increase the school population, it's going to increase the tax structure so we can lower the homeowners' taxes. It's, it's just a win for everyone. I mean, it just is. In the city of Vernon, when they built the bridge, the state built that bridge there on Highway 79 in Vernon, they put the hangers in place, I think, for planting ahead. And we're in the works of working with Vernon and in our board and to bring water and sewage to the north side of that bridge in Vernon to be able to market some of that area. We're pursuing some property now in Ebro to be able to, to put some infrastructure in place in Ebro. We all know that with that airport and that being there at the end of the county, it's, it's got to grow. It's got to grow. With the influx of traffic coming through, population, we're looking at, well, we have, I guess, not totally approved, but we're all on the same track of starting an ambulance service a little more centrally located. We've got one right outside of Vernon and we've got one downtown here in Chipley. And we're looking at putting one in Wausau. And that's not a permanent structure. And we're, they're looking at the count on a regular basis to see what time of day that most of the calls are coming in, where they're from, where the calls are. But we're fixing to, to begin with the EMS department and under the sheriff's supervision, start a 12-hour shift and have an ambulance service there in Wausau. So, I mean, that's a win.
One that you mentioned there is the water and sewer to the south of the interstate.
Yes, sir.
As most of us already know, the county and the city have entered into an agreement for economic development funds.
We have.
Do we have any kind of a time, self-serve grant? But do we have any kind of a timeframe on whom we will know about that request?
Trey, you want to?
Yeah. We submitted the grant two Fridays ago. It'll go into DEO, they'll review it and it...
Next week to next month or the next?
Tommy, it's just a, that's a hard, very, very hard question to ask because we have no control over it. We submitted it, we're working with our legislators and our governor's office.
And we feel good about it.
But now you've got to remember, you've got a timeframe that that's going to be November because that's whenever Richard Scott leaves office, or actually January when Richard Scott leaves office. So it'll be between now and January. I know that's a huge span of time, but that's the best we can give you now, you know? And we're, and I hope, and I know y'all are as well utilizing your content.
That was the one thing that we had not talked about is when would it come to pass if we acquired the grant?
If the timeliness of us inputting the grant and you having your special meeting and us having our special meeting was the biggest hurdle to get through. And we both succeeded in doing that. And the grant was processed and transmitted to DEO, then now it's in DEO's hands for review. And we were in constant contact with the governor's office and leveraging any kind of leverage we have and showing the viability of the project. So we, we feel good because he, he loves Northwest Florida and he's been to Washington County.
We were encouraged, we were encouraged to apply for that grant.
Exactly. And too, as one of those things, if you'll finally get your heads together and work together just a little bit, you can bring things around.
Absolutely.
It works so much better as a team. And I have to say, David, and to the Quonians, the working relationship with the state, I mean, from the Capitol, the school board, the city of Chipley, I mean, we're all holding hands. And I think that it takes that to be successful. And I've seen the times where the city wouldn't speak to the county. I've seen them times. But I think all that's gone. And, you know, you talk about Chipley, Vernon rival football play. I mean, you think that was bad. What do you think about the last game of the year between Bonifay and Chipley? I mean, it's, and we're working with the city of Bonifay. I mean, it's, it's just, we have come together and come so far in making things happen. I'm just pleased about it.
I've got maybe three part questions if you don't mind. What's the operating budget for Washington County in light this year? You don't know yet what was it last year? How many employees does Washington County got excluding constitutional officers and that sort of thing? And are we in a state of net growth in Washington County? Do you know at what rate people are moving in versus we'll move down, die in Washington County?
I think the population is down a little bit to answer the last question first.
So we're not seeing a net growth right now before as many people move in Washington County?
If it is, it's so small. I can tell you our permits are down. The well and building permits, they're down a little bit. But as far as a whole, I think it's the same as 2007?
It's okay. Go ahead.
Our mobile home permits are down, but our dwelling permits are up, which is a good sign. That means you, that means you're confident. You fulfill your busking your time. So our mobile home permits are down at this time, but our dwelling permits are up. For some reason right now our septic tanks are behind. It don't make no sense to me. I don't understand that. But we are at 08's growth rate right now as far as our building permits are issued.
And we look at that monthly. There's a report, in fact, Jim Town is still putting that report out. Has put it out for, for a long time and it's... The total money, and I don't know when you asked about the budget, the county budget, when you're looking at grants and everything that runs through our ship program, the county road and bridge, sheriff, constitutional officers and everything, it is about $29 million. In fact, $29,242,990. But our ad valoreums take per year the $7,532,851. Is the ad valorem that we get from ad valorem taxes. But our tax structure, you get a gas tax, we get a card room tax. There's a lot of different taxes that arrive from that. Sheriff gets grants, all sorts of stuff. But basically for the county, we're looking at 14 and a half million for the whole county, road and bridge, everything. Maybe I've answered your question. I could talk about that all day too.
About employees?
Employees, we have right at 100, not counting any of the constitutional officers. We've got, yeah, right around the 100. Could be a little less than that.
And that's what, by and road and bridge or?
Yes, road and bridge has the, has the majority of the employees.
Some of the permits that you have to buy when you're building a home, do some of those come from the county and some from the state? Like the blower test that you have to have done?
State made that.
That's state, not county?
One of the last letter for that, where it makes no sense.
It makes no sense because you already have to put in doors and windows that are state code and then they're going to come back and make you pay for another test.
Lovely, lovely state politics.
And a lot of times, and some of the things that we get handed down from the state, they have more votes in Miami-Dade County than the rest of the state put together. So when they're looking at some of them, some of the laws that's put in place, they're being based off of the world that's in Miami and Dade County and that's not applicable to us.
Well, most of your septic tanks are.
Exactly.
Sap, all your septic tanks are.
Who can?
Most of them, all of them.
I sat at a, at a table at a conference, last conference we went to, with a group from Miami. And, you know, septic tanks is not part of the world. They have a little island there somewhere that's in their jurisdiction that has septic tanks. And they're wanting to get rid of them. And our world of septic tanks, you can't get rid of them. I mean, like that. And they're making it, in fact, the septic tank haulers have really been struggling trying to be able to dump their waste. And it come down with some mandates that were handed down to us and they put it off for a three-year waiting period, I believe it was. And it had looked like that anybody that pumped sewage out of Washington County was going to have to carry it to Gulf County, which is Cork St. Joe. And if you could imagine the cost that would have been added to pumping a septic tank to haul it to Gulf County would have been tremendous. We have worked with some state people and our county commission as well and had helped the city of Vernon, Wausau to fix a couple of their problems with their sewage system. And it's now available for, for the people that are pumping septic tanks in Washington County to be able to dump in Vernon. So that's fixed. We don't know how permanent it is. But that's, that's what's taking place now.
Do you know how much employee base and recovery and insurance in Washington County?
Meta cover 383 for the base plan?
Yeah, for the family. For the family plan, it's 300 and the upper threes, 380 something for the family plan for the lowest. And for a, for an employee, a single employee, for the lowest plan, it's, it's actually provided for nothing. But now you can buy up for a better coverage if you would like. But I think it's like 360, 380?
Right in that range. Three plans available.
What's the best plan?
I'm not sure of that. The best, the buying up?
Well, you've got, you've got three plans in the, in the offering. Is, one is a $5,000 deductible, one's a $2,500 deductible, and the other one is a $500 deductible. It's gold, silver and bronze.
But I think the question was the amount and money.
I think it's round, it's less than $600.
I would say.
Yeah. Please don't put these numbers, but I will send it to your office. We will have some, have some as at your office. And that starts through.
It's really, it's really been helpful, even with the morale and being able to retain employees. And one of the things that has helped, helped all of us as a board and a county, every time you change a county commissioner or administrator or department head, the first thing they want to do is go in there and pay one of the employees or some of the employees more money because they're not making enough. And what they were basing that off of was, was somebody's thought process. So we went in there and hired a company to come in there and study the jobs that are being done by the county and get the surrounding counties, and they have found an average. So if a, if a starting employee in this type of a job for this area should start at $11 an hour and max out at 16, that's where you start people. And just make sure they're all in the slide. And it's taken quite some time. But this year, we have the last two employees that has been put into that slide is what I refer to it as, the slide. But if we've got a standard of what this job should pay, and in the past that wasn't put in place. It was, you're all over the place. I mean, all over the place. The sheriff had come to us having problems keeping dispatchers. And when you call the police or call the fire or call the ambulance, you need somebody to answer that phone. And he was having just a high rate of turnover. And that study had corrected that and got people up at the pay level where they needed to be to be able to retain them.
Three word question that was kind of meant for two people. We're slated to be debt free in a year or so. We're spending quite a bit of money on that debt.
Yes, we are.
What are our plans going to be with that, with free money? You know, that, that third paycheck that people give them a month? Are there any plans for that money? Once we're able to spend it on things that we need or don't?
There is plans. Number one, we want to look at our benefit package for our employees. And that's being looked at constantly. And the main thing that all of us are interested in doing is giving the ad valorem back to the people. You know, we want to have, we want to have enough money moving forward to put in additional infrastructure. You've got to be prepared for growth. And I think we're, right now at the point where we can have a little money set aside for growth or emergencies. And this is by far one of the very first times we've been able to do this. We've just been throwing all money at, at the debt trying to, to be stewards of the taxpayer's money and not be paying interest with it. But this is something that this board has inherited. And I'm the most senior county commissioner in there at eight years, but it was something that was done way before, before I. And I mean, to answer your question, we want to give it back to the people. But, but we also have to be prepared for infrastructure moving forward and, you know, we're looking at our heavy equipment leases and things. You know, is it better to lease or purchase in the world today? We knew what it was like four years ago, but has that changed? So we're constantly looking at, at better ways and making sure that we are being good stewards of, of the taxpayer's money. One of my personal goals, and we, we're applying for different grants and have been awarded some money and it's set aside for a, for a new ag center. Our, our building is slowly going down. I mean, and what I mean by that, we've got some, some structural damage, something. But moving forward, and it's been discussed in a lot of different circles, I think, right now. But we need to do ag center. And do we want to include something else in the ag center? Do we want to look at having a ag center slash civic center? Most all of us have, have attended the Watermelon Festival at some time or another. And as we move forward, it grows and grows and grows. And you have, Judge Peel is bringing people in from Nashville and it's bringing in a big, big crowds. And wouldn't it be great to have that on the inside? I mean, you know, in a temperature controlled environment? And not just for that event, but how many more events could you bring to Washington County to fill up the motels, to fill up the restaurants, to buy gas, to buy a few groceries? If you brought more and more and more of these events to Washington County? And, and that's my thought process, that's infrastructure. It's having things put in place where you can welcome the crowd, you know? Or, or open up the businesses or whatever you feel like's necessary.
This might be, may not have the answer to this. Do you have, does the board have any idea how much money that the Watermelon Festival brings to Washington County?
I'm not sure.
He needs to.
I do know that he gives, it takes a lot of money for him to put that on, as we know. And he does give to different causes with that. But that would be something for Judge Peel.
I said, no, we knew like...
It brings a lot.
The economic impact for Washington County, you approve of bed taxes?
That's number we should know about.
Groceries, restaurants, hotels, things like that. How much more would they bring into Washington County?
There's a reason I asked him. If you have, you said if you had a place that could do that, if you had events like that, sort of once a year, you had more of those events a year?
It would be tremendous. I, I mean, you would have to, to sit down with some, some closer calculations. And I'm not even sure really how many people that that, the Watermelon Festival brings in. But we all know it's, it's tremendous and it is hard to count.
Todd?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned how much cost to haul the dirt. As you get pretty dead, are you considering more permanent paving rather than building asphalt and that kind of thing?
We are.
On some of the key roads?
Yes, sir. There was an area where Commissioner Jordan and my district kind of touch the Buckhorn, Quahala area. About three years ago, maybe four years ago, I was able to pave through a, through a grant that we had got from the end of Orange Hill up there to the church at the Y for those of y'all that's been out that way. And there was about a six, eight, eight tenths of a mile section that when you come off Orange Hill, when you're on Orange Hill, it turns to milled asphalt and then it goes to the, the new asphalt that we had just poured, it goes to the left. You can go straight across or wipe to the right and go out to Sunny Hills. But anyways, we, it's unheard of for the county to take county coffers and to pave a road. It's just, we're always looking for grants to be able to do that. And we have, for the first time that I'm aware of in history, have budgeted money out of our budget to pave that. And we just have finished it last week with the, with the grassing and the, the seed that they put on it. And it's, it's been very, very nice. We're going in there and getting the base down and getting it where we need to get it and hardness that we need to get it at. And then hiring just a paving company to come in there and to pave it. And this was kind of a test for us as well to see how, see how all of it done. And I give it an A-plus grade. I mean, it's, it has just put it all together in one piece rather than it being all pieced up. But yes, we're constantly seeking funding to pave more roads. And we've got, we've got a lot of them in the works. The state puts guidelines on you as far as how long, after they give you the, the funding, you have to pave it. And, you know, you've got to get right away. You've got to get your alignment. You've got to have surveys. You've got to have a lot of stuff done before the paving can even begin. And just for an example, we're going to be given the funding next year. It's allocated for Kent Road. for Kent Road that's out off of Alford Road to be paved. And we've been working almost a year, I had asked the board to approve pulling enough money ahead to get the alignment down and to, to be able to solicit the property owners and to, to see how much right of way that we needed to be able to move out ahead. And next week, we have a, a, a meeting where the people are going to go in there and sign us some right of way that we need to be able to, to pave that road. So, and it's, like I say, it's been a year process constant. And when you start asking people for some of their property, I mean, they get very sensitive. And it's, it's for improvements. It's, you know, we've got to have drainage, you know, we've got to have.
Remind them they're not going to own it long, when the Lord calls and somebody helps them.
Not everybody wants to hear that.
The sooner you realize that life, the better off you'll be.
Yes, sir.
You don't take none of it with you and you just get used it and take care of it. Back to the ag center, have there been some application for grants to work on it too? And how does that turn out?
Well, we have had some money allocated to the county through grants and we can use it, a certain portion of it for fixing up what we have or, I think most of us, and we haven't talked about it, are thinking we need a new facility. I mean, you're just really putting a dirty Band-Aid on it if you go in there and spend much to try to repair what we have. Now, the outbuilding and stuff, I mean, it's a wonderful facility, but that building needs to be, I mean, at the rate that it's going down, it really is going to have to be replaced. I'm not saying it couldn't be fixed, but, but you still have all the same parking issues, you have all the, you know, and it stays rented out most every weekend.
I mean, it's a very, it's a very usable facility and it is probably used more than any facility like it that I know of in county or something like that.
I agree.
It has become our civic center.
I, I agree and we have outgrown it as a community for most.
Any potential location possible, that's what I'm hoping to think that could be.
You know, there, I have my thoughts down.
I mean, it needs to be a place with enough room that you would do it, do it right, let's have 200 parking spaces.
I think, I think mine and yours.
38, 38 is around that.
I think my opinion, if I shared with you what I thought, and I'd rather not say that out in public at the time, just my personal thought of what I was thinking, I think you would say, oh, that's a great idea. I mean, I just knowing you how, and I think it is a good idea. But, and again, I agree with you. We've got to look at, at future potential. I, I mean, I don't know what any of the rest of them is thinking, we haven't talked about it and are prohibited to do so unless we're in a meeting, but yeah, I have, have my thoughts. And I think we all want a new, new ag center, we're just not sure where all the funding's going to come from and how soon it will come.
My last question is, Trey had made some points during the debate two years ago about ideas for new tax revenue. He had some, some ideas about like Sunny Hills, fair tax, you know, beyond raising the taxes, I don't agree against that, a fair tax revenue increase in some form or way like that. Do you have anything like that in the works or?
Ideas?
I have some ideas. It's, when you start talking about taxes, I mean, it just, it can go all over the place real, real quick. We have implemented, and it's not a tax, it's a, it's a, it's been looked at like a tax, but it is not a tax. You know, we used, we implemented the, the fee for the meters. We, it's a law that's allowable. You know, when you have a telephone pole out there and it's been out there and you're running a bush hog and you're trying to go around it, not all of them, because some of them are in your yards where we mow and we need to round it ourselves, but there's a lot of them in the right of way and it allows the governments, whether it be the city, the county, I'm not sure about the state, but we mow around them. So, you're able to charge a fee for each meter that they have in place and we've done that. And we're trying to give that money back to the taxpayers that we've collected. We charge electric companies. Electric companies either absorbed it, absorbed some of it, absorbed none of it and passed it on to, to us users. And again, our attempt as a board to lower the taxes a quarter of a mil was to, to help offset that. And my personal taxes, I'm paying a quarter of a mil less, but my personal taxes at my home was 22 cent more. Some people it's going to do different than others. I mean, your, your tax assessor can attest to that. I mean, it's, but, but some of them are, are more. Yeah, I mean, we, we have other ideas. There's areas in our state that I'm familiar with, very familiar with, where right now we're using one mil, half of that goes to the ambulance service and half of that goes to the fire. And that's what them two different departments are budgeted off of. Not like the city of Chipley Fire, we donate so much to that, the city of Chipley does as well. And all the, the fire departments are doing their own fundraisers to, to get additional stuff, but if you, to give, if you went in there and added, give ed valourium back to the people and just charge a tax for just the fire departments, you could take every parcel of land in Washington County and charge that just a little fraction and give that mil back to the people that are paying the taxes and be able to fund it. And if you want a bigger fire departments, you know, you go back to the people, how big do y'all own them? The people's paying for them. And, but that money's specifically for fire. Everybody knows when you write this check with your taxes at the end of the year, this is what's going to fund fire. But now you're going to get it back on your homeowner's taxes because you're not going to be charged that much millage. And for quite some time, I owned a house that was done like that. And then EMS as well, you have to have a home to be able to charge for EMS services and that, because you've got to have people to need EMS services. And you can do that one the same way, but I would love to see that, that happen and give that back to the millage. It's, it's statistically, the ones that use the, the fire and the EMS and the police as well, more is the, the people with, the less fortunate, perhaps is that's correct? They use them services more and most of them do not even pay any taxes. So, the one that's using these services are not paying for them at all. It's the ones of us that are paying, the taxes that are paying for that. So, how do you spread that around? It would be like I've just explained to you. Take the burden off the 30% and put it on the whole 100%.
I think we probably need to shut it down to one minute or two or so. Todd, you have any closing, closing statements?
You know, I, I would appreciate your support, that's all I can say.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Good luck. Thank you.